2017 Regular Board Meeting. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrubas?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Mr. Raceack?
Here.
Mark, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First of all, I apologize for the warmth in the building. The compressor upstairs blew, so there's no air conditioning, so try to stay cool. Board salutes. Kathy, do you have one?
Yes, I am. Nearly 6,000 Business Professionals of America students competed at the National Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida, and all of District 204 schools did very well. Alex James from Matia Valley was named national champion and also took first place in PC servicing and troubleshooting. Wabonzi Valley's Pranau J. Kumar won first place in EDUOL database, and Karina Garg was elected as BPA's National President and had the opportunity to meet with the U.S. Secretary of Education. The board salutes all of our BPA students, and congratulations.
Thank you. Lori?
So, the board salutes outstanding achievements by students in all three of our high schools at the 24th Annual High School Video Festival. Niqua earns six top honors, Matia won two top awards, and Wabonzi brought home four awards, including a Crystal Pillar Award, won by Senior Vikram Chederjee for Best Director from the National Academy for Television, Arts, and Science. Congratulations to all the students who participated in this festival.
Thank you.
The board salutes Niqua Valley sophomore Eric Mitchell, who scored a 9.2 and won the pommel horse at the IHSA Boys Gymnastics Individual Event State Finals. Congratulations, Eric.
The National Merit Scholarship Corporation recently announced the winners of its college-sponsored merit scholarship program. Eleven students representing all three of our high schools were among the recipients. These students will receive between $500 and $2,000 annually for up to four years at the institution funding the scholarship. National Merit will announce the final group of recipients in July. Congratulations to all of our National Merit Scholars.
The board would like to salute Niqua Valley's Joyce Chen and Sharina Thie Wenkataasan, who won the Doubles State Band Mittens Championship. Way to go Wildcats, that's awesome.
That's it. Okay, we are now going to move to public comment. All of our public comment today is for non-agenda items. I'm going to ask Ralph Pedron to come up as I read our public comment statement. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep the comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting. The follow-up will be provided by administrator as appropriate. Mr. Pedron, and then next will be Nancy Seibolt.
I exposed at East Aurora District 131 a very suspicious natural gas contract resulting in the termination of the vendor and exposing multiple violations. Tonight, a vote is scheduled to ratify the natural gas contract and pricing to be in place for the next three years. I am asking this board, please table this vote. And reschedule it once all documents can be examined to verify pricing from all three bidders. That was not included on the agenda for tonight. The East Aurora scandal was discovered after documents were examined. I led the charge on that one. Previous FOIA responses did not answer the above request resulting in additional questions and FOIAs that I have submitted. I plead with you to table this vote. That is the reason. Here is an option. Reschedule a special meeting once these documents are obtained from the other bidders. I request the documents be made public to allow us to examine them before the Board of Education votes. I request that all bidders, suppliers, consultants be invited to participate. Please consider postponing this vote in order to get the answers necessary to ensure that the 204 taxpayers, that the natural gas agreement is in the best interest of everyone. Today, I submitted another FOIA requesting the July 1st, 2015 contractual document, which is expiring June 30th of this month. I researched the board agenda in 2015 for the months of April, May, and June, and I could not find approval for this contract. Where is it, if it exists? How can a two-year contract be expiring when there is no record of it being voted on? This is very confusing and needs to be answered on who approved the contract? Who is approving payment on this contract? The money saved, which I am very comfortable that my team has researched this, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars. I would like, and I feel very confident that we are correct on this, and if that is the case, I am requesting that the money saved go to the STEPS program. I will be speaking down the road about many other issues, but this is the main one. It is very important that, again, I ask you, Board of Education, please table this vote. I am available to discuss this with you anytime. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
I ask now that Nancy Seibolt come to the podium, and that will be followed by Deb
My name is Nancy Seibolt, and my daughter Grace is a student at STEPS. In a letter dated June 8th written by Superintendent Sullivan, she stated that she and the board, quote, "have continued to hear from parents that are not satisfied with our short-term solution without investing significant dollars into the Wheatland property," unquote. I'd like to tell District 204 population what our requests were, so they can judge whether or not the district was going to invest significant dollars. For just short term, we asked for more classroom space since enrollment will rise, a digital microwave instead of a dial, use of the kitchen in the basement since the kitchen upstairs is small and there was no way of enlarging it, add a ramp on the west side of the building. If there would ever be an emergency of any kind, two exits for wheelchairs would be needed. Asked to reroute District 204 and Airmac trucks in the beginning and at the end of the school day. School buses line up in three rows in the morning and afternoon, and trucks in the parking lot are there at the same time. A course catalog so parents can have a better understanding of the curriculum. Chromebooks, which every student in the district has. A working and interactive website where teachers and parents can communicate and be updated. Concerns over the water. Students cannot use the water in the kitchen for cooking and are supplied water bottles for drinking. Now, I'm not sure the total cost of the above, but I know it would not have been, quote, "investing significant dollars." In response, the board gave two and a half classrooms. We did not ask for, but we were going to receive, an additional toilet in the ladies' bathroom and purchase of a new hydraulic lift and mats since the present ones were very outdated. At our meeting last Wednesday with Dr. Sullivan, we reiterated what we felt should still be completed for the short term this fall, and what was said was, "We're not asking for the Taj Mahal," and Dr. Sullivan replied, and I quote, "I know you're not," unquote. Never, ever have we ever stated that we wanted our kids separated, excuse me, students separated. All their lives have strived and longed to be included, to be one of the group, fit in, feel loved and empowered by friendships. Now, because of the fear of litigation and costs, you are tearing these friendships apart. Our daughter Grace had a couple girlfriends at Niqua, but it was mostly boys. When she attended STEPS, her small group of girlfriends became larger. That was when we saw her personality change and be so happy to go to school. Now, who knows? It took almost her first full year at STEPS to finally stop talking about Niqua. STEPS was her school. Do you really think that separating and sending our adult children back to schools, that house 14 to 18-year-olds is good for them? The regression in emotion of our transitional community will be great. Please explain the logic, because I don't understand it. I can't see enough about our teachers and aides. They give everything they can. The disrespect shown to our teachers is so disappointing and undeserved. It has come to my attention recently that some of you felt that someone must have written Grace's speech, which she read to you at the April board meeting. Grace and I wrote it together. She is a global messenger for Special Olympics and speaks to large and small groups on their behalf. We write all her speeches together. She also helped write her speech at her senior baccalaureate at Niqua. No steps backwards. Also, Special Olympics at STEPS did awesome at state. Just want to tell you, they did right, and they deserve recognition, just like all the other high school kids do. At every single board meeting, our kids should be recognized.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, here's the documents to support my allegation.
Hi, my name is Deb Gronowski, and my son Ryan will be a second-year student at STEPS. When Ryan found out he was graduating from Niqua and transitioning to STEPS, it was a very emotional time for him. It took us about seven months to finally get him to accept the change. I attribute his acceptance of STEPS to the outstanding community of teachers and friends the STEPS program provides. The teachers are amazing and work so well together to help the students reach their fullest capabilities. STEPS not only provides our adult students a sense of community amongst their special needs peers, it provides esteemed friendships and a support network that is invaluable. It provides a judge-free learning environment where our adult students can feel safe, have a sense of belonging, and help one another become productive, self-sufficient adults. Our adult kids and teachers focus on each other's abilities, not disabilities. Separating our adult students is the most restrictive program option. Our adult students need to be in the same location. Separating them loses their identity and destroys the community they have developed and so desperately need. Several board members at the April 3rd meeting expressed the students should not be separated, and one was brought to tears. Additionally, at the April 3rd meeting, options for the STEPS program were presented by administration. It was stated by administration the cons of facing STEPS in different locations. They stated difficult supervising the program, potential increase in cost to service same needs in different locations, may limit program options for individual STEPS students. A pro to this option was listed that it would not require the relocation of Airmac or records storage. No one ever mentioned a pro or con of the effect it would have on the students. According to the LRE, least restrictive environment, the group that determines the educational placement for a child with a disability must include the student's parents, personnel who know the variety of placement options available to meet the child's needs, and individuals who understand the significance of data used to develop the child's IEP. Additionally, the law states the district may not make placement decisions based solely on factors such as the following: category of disability, severity of disability, configuration of delivery systems, availability of educational or related services, availability of space, or administrative convenience. When the program began, our kids were dumped in a basement of a bank. When capacity was reached, they were dumped in an antiquated building that was reaching its lifespan. Now that capacity and lifespan has been reached at Wheatland, our kids and teachers are being separated and dumped back into the high schools. When is someone going to have a plan and put our kids first? Parents and teachers and administration should be working together to determine the best solution. Instead, we are left with the letter saying, "Stay tuned." Our STEPS adult students and teachers must remain together in order to continue the outstanding community of learning they currently have as they transition into adult living. Please find space in the district where they can all be together. We are regressing, not progressing. No steps backwards.
I ask that Janine McDonough please come up, and then will be followed by Amanda Cox.
Hi, thank you. My name is Janine McDonough. My son Ryan is currently in the STEPS program. I was recently asked if I was mad about the STEPS program. My response was that I'm mad about a lot of things. I'm mad that the Wheatland building and STEPS program have been neglected for years by the district. I am mad that the district saw these issues coming for several years and did not act to solve them earlier. I am mad that the district is blaming parents and not taking responsibility. I am mad that the district has not been truthful and honest with us. I am mad that the district is spending time covering up and making excuses for each other rather than spending time coming up with solutions. I am mad that the district thinks of this as a chess match with parents. This is not a game to us. This affects the lives, emotional well-being, and future of our kids. I am mad that the board is more worried about the number of supporters that we have and where they live instead of making the STEPS program a priority. I am mad that this was a knee-jerk response out of fear of litigation and not because it's the right thing to do. I am mad that this decision was emailed out with no details or plans of how this is going to work. We all have a lot of questions and no answers. I am mad that as a parent, I have no input on this new placement for my son. By law, parents and knowledgeable teachers are required to be part of a placement decision. None of that has occurred. I am mad that no consideration was given to the effects that this will have on the young adults in the program. Our kids have lots of anxiety and have a hard time dealing with changes. I am mad that the way this decision was made was completely disrespectful to the STEPS staff. They were blindsided, just as parents were. I am mad that no one seems to have the guts to discuss this decision with us, when just a week ago, I had half of the board eagerly trying to contact me through various means and requesting to meet with me. Now, all I have is silence from those same people. I am mad that a certain administrator is trying to figure out how to infiltrate our STEPS parent Facebook page instead of figuring out what's best for these young adults. If anyone has something constructive to contribute to our Facebook conversation, then please send me a Facebook request and ask to be added to the group. We would love to have an open dialogue with administration and work together to solve the issues. We have nothing to hide. I am mad that no one has the guts to stand up and do the right thing. So, yes, I am mad. But this is not about me. This is about the young adults in the STEPS program. We are asking that you not split them up. When you are doing this, you are isolating them. We ask that you find space in the district that will keep them all together and provide them services that they need and deserve. We are asking for you to make these young adults and STEPS program a priority. We are asking for you to develop a one, a three, and a five-year comprehensive plan for the STEPS program, a plan that includes input from parents, students, staff, and administration. We are asking for an information session from the board, a session where a STEPS plan can be discussed out in the open and not behind closed doors. We're asking for you to do the right thing, no steps backwards for our kids, and full transparency.
Amanda Cox, and then followed by Chris Seibolt.
Hi, my name is Amanda, and my brother Brandon will be going to STEPS in two years. The sheet I have with me is the sheet that was given to my mom when she went to the STEPS parents' meeting for students who will soon be there. And on this sheet, it says, "What is STEPS?" And underneath, it says, "Our goal is to prepare young adults with disabilities to lead fulfilling adult lives once they leave the public school." Keyword, "public school." The transition phase of education will help build the bridge between school and adult life. So, I want to know what your plan is and how you think putting these kids back in high schools will help them grow to learn how to live lives outside of school. And until that happens, I am very disappointed and saddened by the actions of this board.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Seibolt. I'm the older brother, the proud older brother of my younger sister Grace Seibolt over there, who just finished her second year at the STEPS program. Growing up with a sister with autism, there was a lot that I didn't understand growing up, such as why I was required to bring my little sister everywhere I went, why I always had to stay home and babysit when my friends were out going to movies on Friday nights. But as I grew older and I looked back at my middle school and high school years, it was because there were people there always to reach out to me to say, "Hey, Chris, you want to come over? You want to come do something?" And it's not until I got a little older and I could reflect back that this was a huge privilege that I had that many of the students at STEPS can never experience. Growing up, at Hall of Grace's birthday party, she would invite all these girls. They'd come and have a good time, but then the next weekend, never got another call. It wasn't until this past two years at STEPS that it's just a light's gone on in her. Every day, she looks forward to going, because this is the first time she truly feels like she belongs. She has these friends that every weekend are reaching out to her, saying, "Grace, you want to come over? How are you doing? How was your day?" This never happened before. There are great, phenomenal individuals at Niqua, and I'm sure Matia and Wabonzi as well, but it's just much different when you're in an environment with fully functional adults and differently-abled persons. No matter what, they're still separated. No matter how great they did a job integrating, that's what STEPS did. STEPS fully integrated the students. They didn't ever have to feel like they are the outcasts. And sending them back to their schools that they went to, they're going to go right back to feeling segregated again, feeling like the outcasts. Even more so, I don't want my younger sister being a 21-year-old sitting next to 14-year-olds at lunch, just being the freak show for the younger kids to look over and see, "Why are there full-grown adults here with us? Why are they walking amongst us?" It's not fair to them, and it's not right. It's not right to our families, and it's not right to the children who finally have a safe space where they feel integrated and involved for the first time in their lives. That's all.
Okay, we are now going to move to superintendent report and consent agenda. We always begin with the superintendent report. Dr. Sullivan?
Okay, this is our first meeting since graduation ceremonies took place at the Three Valleys. It was a long but rewarding day. We saw over 2,200 students move across the state into the next stage of their life, and we shook a lot of hands that day. I know it was a special day for two of our board members, Kathy Peel and Susan Demming, as they were each able to hand a diploma to their own child. So, in addition to the parents, family members, and friends that attended, we had over 1,500 viewers watching it online, which was a significant increase from the year before. This is also our first board meeting since the end of the school year, and I wanted to acknowledge our staff members who are retiring this year. We have a total of 77 staff members retiring. We have 58 members of our Teachers Association, 15 members of IPCA, one of them sitting right over there, two non-bargaining employees, and two administrators retiring as of June 30th. So, we want to thank them for their 1,577 total years of service to Indian Prairie District 204. We've certainly all contributed to the success of our district and our students, so we wish them well as they enter that new chapter. That includes you. Diana, we'll miss you over there. Jay will be updating the board on the action, or rather, inaction in Springfield and its implications for the district a little bit later tonight. I will remind everyone of what you already know. We still have no budget, and the state of Illinois still owes Indian Prairie $15.3 million for last year's bills. Senate Bill 1, which is the evidence-based school funding model, passed both the House and the Senate, but it's being held by the Senate while the governor threatens a veto over what he terms as a Chicago bailout. There are many of us who would like to see the two sides get back together toward a position of compromise on this bill, and I, along with other superintendents in the state, continue to be active in our advocacy for schools, for both the school funding formula discussions, as well as the state budget. We haven't done very well so far, but we're continuing to advocate. District 204 welcomes Aurora Mayor Richard Irvin, who's holding a town hall meeting at Wabonzi Valley on Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. The mayor is looking for community input on a variety of issues, including education, as he develops a plan for the next four years. So, he will be holding a second town hall at West Aurora High School on June 19th, so we're hoping that the public can get to either one of those. And then, we're ready to move on. We have some administrative replacement hires that we'd like to introduce you to. Go ahead and go on to that. So, we're going to start with our Director of Support Services. I'm pleased to bring forward the name of Ron Johnson. I know Ron is here. We're going to ask you to stand there, Ron, so they can all take a good look at you, all right? Ron comes to us from Oak Park and River Forest High School District 200, where he has served as the Director of Purchasing and Transportation since 2012. Ron has a background that includes both business with a degree in accounting and an MBA and a master's in education. So, we are excited to recommend Ronald Johnson for your approval to the position of Director of Support Services.
I'll make a motion for the approval of Ron Johnson as the Director of Support Services as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jackie, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Raceack?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Got a long way to go to make this. All right. We have two Director for Student Services positions on the agenda tonight. I don't believe either candidate is here. Is that correct? I don't think so. The first is Michelle Gallo. Michelle comes to us from Glen Allen District 41, where she currently serves as the Director of Student Services. She has previous experience in special education leadership in West Aurora, as well as building leadership positions in Schaumburg and Berwyn, and we're pleased to recommend Michelle Gallo for your approval to the position of Director of Student Services.
Make a motion to approve the board, approve Ms. Michelle Gallo as Director of Student Services for District Operations K through 12 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jackie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Raceack?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Congratulations, Michelle. The second is Dana Burkhold. Dana comes to us from District 230 in Orland Park, where she is currently the Director of Student Services. She has previous special education leadership experience in New Lennox and also experience as a school psychologist. We're pleased to recommend Dana Burkhold for your approval to the position of Director of Student Services.
I move that the Board of Education approve Ms. Dana Burkhold as the Director of Student Services Elementary as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jackie, call the roll.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Raceack?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
We are now going to move to the consent agenda.
So, I need to ask for item R to be removed.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I move to approve consent agenda items D through T with the exception of R as presented.
Second.
Second.
Is it G through T?
G, yeah, not B.
It said D.
Want to amend my motion? Please.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion to approve consent agenda items G through T with the exception of R as presented.
I have a motion and a second.
Any discussion? Jackie, call the roll.
Okay, one second. Now, this will take me a moment. I apologize. We're going to give me a minute to have fun with this one.
I'd like to make another motion.
Yeah, it's fabulous. God, now I'm ready. Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Peal?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
And now we need a motion for letter R, please.
Since we're going to make two separate motions with this one, because I was not at the May 15th meeting, or I wasn't at the June 3rd meeting, so.
I think we can do one motion.
Well, she's going to, she can approve mine, but I can't approve hers.
If we just, you guys don't vote on R.
Just don't at all? Okay.
You can abstain from both.
Okay, I'll abstain from both.
So, understanding that you each need to abstain, I will make the motion for consent agenda item R for approval.
Which is the approval of minutes from regular meeting on May 15, 2017, special meetings on June 1, 2017, and June 3, 2017, and executive session on May 15, 2017, and June 1, 2017.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jackie, call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Peal?
Abstain.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Abstain.
Motion passes. We are now moving to action items, which is the approval of proposed Illinois Association of School Board Resolution. I think we're turning this over initially to Ms. Peal.
Actually, Kathy, before you start, can I just apologize to the board? I did not or did not see this, or it might have been in an April folder, but I missed it, so I apologize for, because I usually try to stay on top of this for the board, and I did not get it to you guys in a timely manner as such if you wanted to create a resolution. But I appreciate Kathy and her staying on top of things and staying on her resolution and going after that still. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, let's see, I felt a little bit late on this one, too. I've been sick quite a bit, so thanks for the reminder, Karen. And although I had talked to Terry Fielding from 203 about it, because he was on the committee last year, and he passed along the minutes from the resolution last time. So he had made a suggestion that to make the resolution a little bit more inclusive and gaining more support, that we amend ours to option 1. My personal problem with that is it really doesn't do any change, and it doesn't really create the conversation of why this is a problem for polling places in our schools.
Give some background.
Much more background, do you want?
Here's some new board members, and I think the community.
Oh, right, okay, yeah. I forgot about you guys are new. So my original proposal last year was to have polling days changed to the weekend or some other day when the kids aren't present, because it is costly. Last year, it was going to cost us about $10,000 to have the polling day for, what was the April 4th? Was that the day? For our consolidated election, because we could not find another date that would be suitable when the students were not present on that Tuesday. So, and to kind of prove the point, we were caught short because our plans to have the Aurora Police come in and do supplies the security, they were unable to do so, so our administrators had to pick up the ball. So it's a time-consuming and costly measure for us to take when we have students present, and it seems like an unnecessary risk, in my opinion, that we are putting students at risk where a school is fairly open to the public, and we shouldn't have to do that. It seems like an unnecessary risk. I don't think voting on a Tuesday should be all that sacred myself. That proposal was amended through committee last year to say, to disallow voting when students are present in our schools, but it was voted at 177 to 143.
It was very close, yeah.
Against. So we came close.
Where was it voted on?
At the delegate assembly at our Illinois School Board Association meeting. Okay, so that's in November.
And I made, I think, two comments at the delegate assembly about our amendment. I fought hard for it. The people that I heard around me and the conversations I had after the vote, the biggest opposition to things that I heard, that the first thing was, these are public school buildings, they should be used for whatever, this is the only area in our community where people can come together. I told them I fully understood that. And then the other argument I heard in opposition of this, and I'm going to kind of dovetail this in asking Karen a question, is they couldn't understand that while the current position statement of IASB is that school districts can refuse to be used as a polling place, a lot of cases that isn't an option that we have. And we've, and I can even throw this to Justin, too, because I know he's looked at the legal ramifications of it, but they, a lot of other districts haven't tried to move polling places out of their schools, so they don't understand the challenges that come with that. So they, the delegates from the other school boards were not understanding the struggles that we've been faced with in our district. So I think if we word this properly, I think I could come with a better argument, but I think it's a good discussion, too, knowing that, you know, the people that voted against were looking at it, schools are a community, they're paid by tax dollars, we should all be able to come there. And then the other thing was, they're looking at the current statement and thinking, well, why can't we not have the polling places there? So that was their reason.
And I think what Terry was trying to do was correct that with, it was based on the local school board making a decision that the schools would not be used, that that would be a part of the school code, or the election code. However, that's not all that different from the original position, and it doesn't speak to the costs of doing this and the time that's involved. So, you know, as I thought about it, put it together as an option, as I thought about it, I thought it was more, it would be more relevant to raise the awareness with the other districts that are there, that it still could be an option, but let's take the burden off the school district. Why should the school district be responsible for planning, the strategies behind it, putting everything in place, and paying for the security? Why should this fall on the school district rather than the commission? Now, Justin has, so that was the second option that I put out there. Now, Justin has put another option together, which I'm pretty supportive of, too. Done a very thorough job.
I'm getting a little uncomfortable, so point of procedure, Mr. President, can we do a motion?
Well, wait, can we really, can we just explain them off first?
We're moving from, I think, board presentation to talking about what's going on, and then we can discuss it, and then we can amend it.
All right. How many times are we going to remind?
Sure.
That's fine. I think that's appropriate. Do I have a motion to, well, I don't know what I'm approving. I have option 1, option 2.
We can pick one, and then discuss the options, and then vote or amend the motion.
I move to approve option 1.5 as presented by Justin.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do you want to continue, Mrs. Peal and Mr. Carrubas?
Justin, would you like to explain this? Because most of us are just seeing this tonight.
Yeah, and that's, oh, there's my discomfort. So, we have, the public agenda has two items that are proposed, and one of them is, so we're trying, we're concerned about school safety, we're concerned about opening the schools up during polling, but when you propose an IASB resolution, you start thinking about not just your school district, but school district across the state. And so if you need to get a resolution passed that a state organization supports, you need to try to draft it in such a way that it's not just meetings, the needs of your district, but the needs of all the districts. So in looking at the first resolution, I looked at the election code, and I also found that the, it's in the school code as well, that it requires, that we use school buildings for polling places. So generally, the election code requires public buildings to be used, and the school code specifically provides that schools shall offer their buildings if asked. And then it recommends or encourages schools to close for schools or hold a teacher institute day. And then both of those, I believe, have their own set of problems with the school calendar and potentially negatively impacting our district goal one of academic achievement. Basically, you're taking a Tuesday off in the middle of the week, or you need to couple it with a Monday, Tuesday, and if you do that a couple of times a year, it becomes difficult with maintaining the learning process and balancing other holidays. So that's why Ms. Peal was talking about moving the election day as an option. That's why one of the options talks about security measures. The goal with the security members is to isolate the public from the school population, like we currently do with our security measures. Why option 1 doesn't work is because it needs to be expanded beyond the election code and include the school code. In no event, I think, would the schools be comfortable allowing our security measures to be the responsibility of another governing body? I think we have somebody on here that we can talk to about that, but that's not going to fly. So we don't want anybody to be in charge of our security. We're in charge of our security. So I think what, and then number 2, you know, allows us to prohibit being used as school polling places, but that's not likely to pass, because that's too empowering for schools. Other buildings or other government entities will oppose it. And so the option that I proposed, which is discussed as option 1.5, is trying to propose an option that's more likely to pass, and the proposal reads as such. "The Illinois Association of School Boards shall support legislation that amends the election code and the school code to mandate that the appropriate officer or board, having responsibility for providing a polling place for the election, reimburse the school district for any costs in acting as a polling place, which estimated costs shall be provided to the appropriate officer or board in advance of any decision to use a particular public building in order to ensure that the efficient use of public resources." Why does that have more support? Now, we're talking about not just mandating that a building be used, or this government entity bear the cost, we're imposing on the county or election, giving them information, and then they need to decide where the polling places should be, and hopefully, in the best interest of the taxpayers overall, providing it at a place that minimizes the cost. So I think if people understood what our costs were to maintain the safety, they would make a more informed decision, and there might be lower-cost options in public buildings that would mitigate some of the, yeah, use public buildings, but I don't want to use my public, my schools as a public building. If it costs X, I'd rather use the library if it costs Y. So I think that's a, that's an option that has a wider rationale that appear to more people.
Question. When you were, when you looked at the, I know you based this on statute, kind of in an already current statute that's out there, but do you think at the end of this proposal would be good to also explain what, why we're looking to ensure the efficient use of our public resources? It's actually for the safety of students. Do you think that should be in there anywhere, since it's something that the Illinois Association of School Boards is supporting? Because I know what you're saying there, but does it, does it add a little emotional kind of flavor to it if you put the safety, to ensure the safety of the students?
It's a rationale.
Do you want me to fill?
Right, well. I could, if you finish with this question.
Just tails off.
Yeah, I had that same thought, Mark, that my point is that it's the security that adds the cost, so I kind of felt like the cost, including security, to ensure the separation of the public from the students, should be a part of that proposal, so that that's definitely And I'm not so, you know, Justin has his reasoning up here, but I think we might be combining, when we put the position statement forward to IASB, we have to include our reasoning, and I don't think, or the rationale, that, the rationale that I have for option 1 and 2 are, I think it would be probably inclusive of that rationale.
I think we just need to approve the proposal, and the rationale can be worked on later. You might think of stuff at the delegate meeting that you want to propose as rationale, but.
And for Laurie and Susan, this is just the first step. The staff actually make proposals back to us normally that might tweak some language, and then when it goes in front of the Legislative Committee of IASB, they also tweaked it last year, and then it comes back to the school board to approve it as the, if the committee did accept it, that we vote to either support the IASB's recommendation or oppose their recommendation.
So are we amending the proposal?
I would like to make an amendment to the proposal.
It's not my motion, but I support the amendment. We have a June 21 deadline, so there's some urgency to get this done this month, just to keep the ball rolling.
Will they be asking again, like they did last year, Kathy, for somebody to go and explain it to the Resilience Committee?
Most likely. You're always invited, you don't have to go, but you're always invited to go, I would suggest. You know.
Yeah, okay. Because we can explain some of that.
I think it's in your letter when that is, the letter that's included. I think it's the beginning of August.
I know they asked you to be there at like 7:00 or 8:00 a.m. on a Saturday or something.
No, it's actually 9:00 p.m., so it's not so bad.
The reason I liked 1.5 was because it did, well, let me just go back. Option 1, you know, puts the burden of the personnel and financial costs on the election commission. And like Justin said, we need to be responsible for our own personnel and for safety reasons. So I'm just, I'm unsure that if we do, if we go with option 1, then number one, that they would provide the appropriate personnel, and would they really bear the cost of that if they want to try to, you know, use volunteers or something like that? So I don't know, I'm not comfortable with that being fully implemented the way we
So I don't know, I'm not comfortable with that being fully implemented the way we have it worded here. I think there's too many, too many opportunities to kind of wiggle through that. So I liked option 1.5 because it again puts the personnel and, or puts the financial cost on the election commission with some information that is attached to that, being what, you know, what the cost is, how many people are needed, you know, here's what we need in our schools, you decide if you want to pay for it or, or find another location. So we get what we want, they decide if they want to carry through with that. So that's why I liked 1.5. And I agree with, option two, I don't think is going to be supported by IASB.
Well, it's actually so similar to the current position anyway. And it doesn't point out the cost.
Mrs. Peel, I think you made the motion, so do you want to amend?
No, actually.
I didn't.
Oh. Sorry.
So we can't amend her motion?
We can't.
Can we do that right now?
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment to your motion.
Why don't you just let her do it?
All right, then you make it.
I don't know what you're wanting to amend.
How about I do it?
I don't know what you're wanting to amend, so.
I want to add, including for, in his proposal, after the word "costs," school district for any cost, I don't, you had district or board there? I'm not sure.
It should be district, I think.
Okay. For any district costs, including security, to, to ensure the separation of students from the public.
So you're just adding language?
What, instead of, can you say that again? Because I actually, say it again, please.
To include security costs to ensure the separation of students from the public.
Can't we just put, to ensure student safety?
Oh, student safety, if you want to say that.
That way, that, that way.
No, I just really want students separated from the public.
Yeah, I agree.
The reason, the reason I said student safety, though, is because it should be up to the individual school district of how they want to ensure student safety.
I would like to amend my motion.
Thank you.
I like what you're, can I, can we just finish that?
Yeah, because I think it's important. Because I think when you say separation, you will, going back to Justin's point, you have to look at it from all school districts. When you say ensuring student safety, it leaves it broad enough to have the individual district decide how they want to ensure the student's safety. Chances are, each individual, each individual district is going, going to want to ensure the separation of the students, but I think you need to leave it general and broad enough for every district to determine that on their own.
So leave it at student safety instead of saying separation? I, I can't understand what you're saying. I hope we have that flexibility.
Well, we will, because we're the ones that are going to, as the, as the, as the motion reads, the proposal reads, every school, the school district will be providing that dollar amount that they feel is necessary to ensure the safety. So the, every single school district will be supplying that dollar amount based on what they want to do to ensure that safety.
Yeah, anyways, not law. Yeah, that's fine with me. Did you get it, though? Do you have something from that conversation?
Yeah, just one second.
Sure.
So Susan and Lori are new to this, so do you have any other questions or concerns?
Well, the only question that I had is, why couldn't we, instead of trying to amend that particular motion, why couldn't we just take a vote up or down and assume vote down that one and then make the proposed, Justin's proposed, a motion?
We can do that.
I, I mean, to me, that was, would be easier.
Okay. Any other discussion? So let's call the original motion and call that.
May I withdraw your motion?
Sure. I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. And so, can we now, we have a new motion.
I'm going to attempt, attempt one.
Jackie's in trouble right now.
I move to adopt option 1.5 as our proposal to IASB with the addition of language that includes the cost of security and.
Student safety.
Student safety.
Student safety.
Okay.
I know I'm at risk here, but could you read that out loud for the public, please? The motion.
The proposal.
The proposal.
Oh. Okay, well, the proposal is currently written, but we're going to add language to that, so we'll work on that later. But the proposal is currently written, is "The Illinois Association of School Boards shall support legislation that amends the election code and the school code to mandate that the appropriate officer or board, having responsibility for providing a polling place for the election, reimburse the school district for any costs in acting as a polling place, which estimated cost shall be provided to the appropriate officer or board in advance of any decision to use a particular public building in order to ensure the efficient use of public resources."
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Would just like.
There, I don't know if we need to, there should be a correction. Justin had school board here. Lori read it as.
Well, he read it as district originally, that's why I changed it.
Okay, so, all right, so that, okay, so that change was made, okay.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Any further discussion?
Will you, Mr. Carubas? Yeah, would you like me to do the roll?
Can I, Jackie, can you please call the roll?
There's a gavel right here.
I know, yes.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Mr. Raisan?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
This is why school boards are supported by administration, right?
Did you get Mike's?
Did you get my vote?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's aye. Now moving to discussion, starting with the American Sign Language II instructional materials.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to talk with you about the instructional materials for American Sign Language II. I'm here on behalf of Mike Purcell and our curriculum teams to, under board policy six colon dash, I'm sorry, six colon two ten, we ask the board to approve instructional materials. Tonight is just about consideration. There's no vote needed or any action required, just opportunity for you to learn a little bit more about American Sign Language II instructional materials and ask any questions. These materials will be placed here so that anyone can come and take a look at them between now and then when we ask for approval at the July 17th, 2017 board meeting. This curriculum was approved by the Board of Education as a new course at the January 30th, 2017 meeting. The instructional materials are in sequence with the materials that were provided for American Sign Language I. It's a nice sequence that moves there without any gaps. As the teachers reviewed the choices, they felt this one was most appropriate for consideration. So I'm asking you, and will be asking you, to approve on the July 17th board meeting, signing naturally, the student workbook and teacher materials. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The only comment I have, as I've heard from so many students that graduated last year from our district, they wish you would have had Sign Language.
Enrollment is increasing, yes.
I've heard that more this summer than any other thing from students.
I think it's safe to say that we'll be back next fall asking for approval of American Sign Language III as well.
Ms. Pease, where, where's the material kept or where, where will it be kept?
It's Don Monkman, who is the secretary, the administrative assistant for curriculum and instruction, has it available.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so they come to the district and ask to request to see the curriculum and then they get Don.
Any other questions? Kathy, I think you're staying up here for Spanish III instructional materials.
For Spanish III, and it is the same process that we just went through. We're just asking for consideration tonight as we will ask for approval at the July 17th board meeting. This, the curriculum was not changed or adapted. It was approved in 2011, for the 2011, 2012 school year. The reason for the instructional materials is we go through the review cycle and we look at the curriculum and look at the instructional materials we have available. The teachers really felt as if they needed something with a more authentic approach to Spanish at this level. And so they reviewed, as you can see from the board documents, a wide variety of materials, and found that the entre culturas three and the flex text were most appropriate, replacing aben samos, which I'm sure a lot of you have seen aben samos, because it's been around for a long time. But the, the key to this one was really looking for some authentic cultural experiences in relationship to the language instruction. Any questions? Thank you, I'll see you July 17.
Now, ask the staff who's going to do the district discipline update to come forward.
And special guests, yes, have in special guests.
Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Sullivan. My name is Brad Hillman, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for the Middle Schools. On behalf of the teaching and learning team, I would like to thank you for allowing us to come before the board and present the annual student behavior review. Joining me tonight to present our work is Dr. Lee, Assistant Superintendent for the high schools, and Mrs. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent for the elementaries. Additionally, we have invited to assist us in the presentation several, several of our friends from 360 Youth Services. We have Katie Leclair, who is the Chief Executive Officer, Margot Smith, who is the Clinical Director, and Tanisha Davis, Specialized Youth Services Coordinator. Later in the presentation, they will be explaining the wonderful work that 360 Youth Services is doing within our high schools. During our presentation tonight, we are happy to take your questions throughout the presentation, but we will also have a place at the end of the presentation for questions as well. As has been the case in previous years, we have seen an overall decrease in the use of out-of-school suspensions. We truly believe that this is because we have great students with wonderfully supportive parents. Additionally, our school administrators and our teachers are working diligently to continue creating a positive and welcoming environment for all students. While we still have work to do, the overall trend in our data continues to be positive. We have 99% of our students not receiving an out-of-school suspension for the 1617 school year. The purpose for tonight is threefold. We want to review our current interventions and how it is that we are reducing our out-of-school suspensions. We also want to review the 201617 out-of-school suspension data, including demographic data and the five-year trend. And then finally, we would like to highlight the role of 360 Youth Services, giving some history, some referral data, and sharing some success stories in a wonderful video.
So, we want our schools to be places of, not only where students are developing levels of learning, but actually look forward to coming to school. We want them to be excited about the school day. And part of that begins with our building administration teams and our teachers. We know that they're committed to making students feel welcome on a daily basis, make sure that they feel valued and appreciated. And we, they maintain a daily focus on, on doing this and getting kids involved in schools and after, and clubs at schools, athletic events, school events, and all of those go along to helping to build positive culture and climate throughout the entire school day. What you, what we have on the slide here are just a small sample of daily interactions that are taking place towards helping to build this positive climate and culture. First off, one of the things I'd like to mention is that we can't do anything without our parents. We partner with parents on many different avenues, not just in terms of some of the things that you'll hear tonight, but also in terms of what we do on a daily basis. We know that that's one of the keys partnerships in everything that we do. Maintain a keeping kids in class philosophy. We know that our teachers are dedicated to not only having their own set of classroom behavior interventions, but also being proactive with communication home to parents before an issue escalates. Forming those relationships with students so that they can take time to not only get to know who they are on a academic level, but also on a social level, so that they can see things right before if the student's having a bad day or if that student just needs additional help, they are allowing that time in class so that that student feels safe. And then I want to really touch upon what you see up there with our SRO collaboration. We are fortunate to have a wonderful partnership with both the Naperville and Aurora Police Departments. The officers that are in our buildings are there because they want to see students succeed. They are there and they see themselves as really an extended piece of what's offered in the classroom. Some of the current interventions that we offer, if we were to list all of them, that would probably be an entire separate meeting. And that's a good thing, because we know that our students are individuals first. And each student has different needs. And we try to meet those needs by making sure that we have a wide variety of interventions that are used when students are struggling to, to help them make good choices. Some of the examples of interventions that we use or alternative suspensions include where we'll do obviously verbal and written warnings, we'll have restorative conferences that come out of some of our restorative justice training that's present in the schools, counselor, social work referrals. You're here in just a moment, some of the wonderful work that 360 Youth Services has been able to do in our schools. We continue to, to offer avenues of community service that parents, again, partner with us on, staff check-ins, social suspensions, the list really goes on and on. And, and that's really to the, to the amount of work that's led by the building principals and extends to the teachers, the deans, the assistant principals. You know, when we had that previous slide that talks about keeping kids in class, there have to be a number of things that we're going to support them in so that they can continue to make better choices, so that by the time they leave us, they're well-prepared for the next step in their lives.
We also wanted to share with you how we look at some of the data. So, we do tiered levels of, of review. Each school receives its disaggregated data each month, similar to what you receive. Schools look at the data on two levels. One is that macro level with the assistant superintendents and the administration reviewing the data. They look at trends across subgroups and look for potential biases. Then also at our monthly principals' meetings, there are different levels of review where we look at behavioral scenarios and talk about what would we do if, and work through that piece. That helps us maintain a consistent focus across the district and allows us to have some very candid conversations about potential bias. It also gives principals the opportunity to share different strategies that they're using for particular subgroups or students or infractions. Then also, data is looked at at a student level. Administration in each school analyzes the data to ensure that similar infractions and situational circumstances are treated with the same consequence. In addition, principals call assistant superintendents before issuing any out-of-school suspension that might be a more serious infraction. That gives administration a sounding board and also helps maintain consistency across the schools. At the elementary level, we don't have quite as many out-of-school suspensions, so that's not something they experience, nor do they have administrators that they can bounce ideas off of. So they do that here at the district office. And then when we're looking at the data at a student level, we're looking at what kinds of supports do students have? Do they have the right level of supports in place? What else do we need to do for a particular student? We wanted to, to go back and look at Public Act 99456, which is commonly known as Senate Bill 100. That went into effect in September and gave us two, only two possible reasons that we could do out-of-school suspensions. We've been operating under the philosophy of keeping kids in school for a number of years. We want to teach appropriate behaviors and partner with parents, but Public Act 99456 gives us the opportunity and, and makes it a requirement. We have done some training with our administration and with our staff to ensure that what we're suspending students for falls within these two categories, a threat to school safety and a significant disruption to other students' learning. We've been successful in utilizing some preventative interventions in our. We've been successful in utilizing some preventative interventions in our schools, or in-school suspensions, or combinations of in-school and out-of-school suspensions when it's warranted. Another component of this law is to have reentry meetings with parents when students return from an out-of-school suspension, and we've been doing that in every case, as well as in some of the in-school suspension cases, and have had great success in getting our parents to partner with us, and really looking at what supports are needed for a particular student. Overall, our, sorry, overall, our out-of-school suspension data shows us that 1% of our students have received an out-of-school suspension. The rates vary a little bit by level, but overall, 1% of the students receive, have received an out-of-school suspension. Next, we want to break down the data for you by level. So, this is the elementary schools' out-of-school suspensions over the last five years. There's a nice stair step down over the last five years over the total number of suspensions. It's also broken by race of the students, and those are the number of students who have received an out-of-school suspension, not the incidents. And you can still see that there is a disparity, that we have more of our African-American students are representing more of our out-of-school suspensions. This is a breakdown by other types of subgroups, female and males. And in elementary school, you can see that the males are a much greater proportion of the out-of-school suspensions than the females. In addition, the free and reduced lunch has pretty much stayed the same. And this year, we've seen an increase in our students with IEPs at the elementary level who've received an out-of-school suspension. That really is attributed to some of our students with emotional disabilities requiring more intensive services and moving through that more restrictive environments. It's also important to note, when you look at these bars, that a student may count in multiple categories there.
Here, we see the middle school data, and you will notice that there is a slight increase in the number of out-of-school suspensions. Last year, we had 1.02% of middle school students experiencing a suspension, and this year, we have 1.20% of the students having experienced an out-of-school suspension, so a slight increase. The overall increase is really due to three categories of students. Our African-American students went up by six students receive, more students receiving an out-of-school. Also, two or more races went up four, and we did see our white students also going up nine. But we also have seen some decrease within our Asian population and also our Hispanic or Latino students. In this particular slide, we're now again breaking down the data and looking at female versus male, and we see that there is a relatively larger increase of female students receiving an out-of-school suspension, accounting for 12 of the 14 out-of-school increase from last year. And we also see a similar increase at free and reduced lunch and IEP students.
Brad, was there any trend analysis there, why the increase? Was there a specific behavior that you saw an increase from this year, from previous years?
The effect of social media and not being able to get in front of the social media piece that's happening in the evening, and then is coming into the school earlier in the morning, and we might not be fully aware of that. So, that is some of the increase that we have seen. Specifically, for some of our female students, that is a little bit of a concern.
Thank you.
At the high school, we continue to see over the five years, a trend of total number of suspensions continues to trend downward. As you look at some of the categories based upon race, we know that we still have work to do in some of the disparities that exist, and that work will continue into the next school year.
Dr. Lee, can you, can you share a little bit, you know, one of the things that I had shared was that, you know, we look at our African-American students being 9% of our population, overall student population, and .396, almost 40% of our OSSes. Can you share some of, when you talk about work continuing specifically?
Sure.
What are we, how are we addressing that?
Yeah.
As well as the students?
Absolutely. So, you know, as we, as we look, even though the total number of suspensions continues to decline, we know that this year, there was a 40% disparity between African-American students and our other population of students. This did represent a 5% decline from the previous year. And so, when we sit down with the building principals and building administration, some of the things that we do is share data, and as we share data, we talk about different trends. So, this is one trend that is talked about amongst all the three high schools, including our smaller Indian Plains Alternative School. One of the things that we talk about first is what's working? What are some things that maybe a building is doing not only to address a certain particular behavior, but a certain, certain different populations? And some of those successes are shared, and then also some of the challenges are shared. And, you know, I think the biggest thing that some of the buildings that they're able to take away from this is to build upon some of the successes that they've had, because I think we're reaching some students because of the trend downward, but continue to come up with additional ideas that's generated by building to continue to help the students that we've yet continued to reach. I think the number of interventions lists that we offer, I think that has to be maintained at a high level, because again, each student is different. And what works for one student may not work for others. I think the schools really continue to see the benefits of maintaining a positive parent relationship. And then, quite frankly, you know, as we'll hear in a couple of minutes, the work of 360 Youth Services in our schools has really been a huge piece to some of the trend that continues in this year, and we've been really excited about that partnership with them. But, you know, at the same time, you know, we're not satisfied. And I think, you know, you know, as you mentioned, the 9% that's out there, we know, you know, that's a segment of our population that's, that's obviously just, we need to continue to make sure that we're making good choices for, just like the other 40, 50, 80%. So, those are just some of the things that they're continuing to do, but I really believe the number of interventions that are being offered is putting us on a path that we know we're going to be there.
So, as a follow-up to Susan, when you meet with the schools, and especially at the end of the school year and as you begin to do the new school year, do you set a written target with them? Because I think when things are written in terms of a target, then they're addressed. You know, we could go from one year to the next, but somehow putting something in writing commits one to that. So, can you talk about that process a bit, and, you know, then maybe we'll see even further reduction?
Yeah, I guess I'll comment at the, at the high school level, you know, there are, there are people in this room that know, I have been stating, you know, since last year, hey, we're going to be under 100, you know, in a certain category of students. And for me to step out and make that boldly was really because of the belief in the people at each of the building and what they're doing. You know, I, I look at targets, like you say, Mr. Azak, and, you know, it's, it was very evident to all the building leaders of what our target was. But also, I think what the target was that we focused on was, you know, making sure that, one, all of our students, and this is for all of our students, that we're sure due process across the board, so that no matter what the behavior is, each student is treated fairly and consistent. And so I think when we start to break down our due process from that level, we're able to see, are we being consistent in how we approach students, and how referrals are generated? Are we, you know, when we're in the hallways, are we seeing a certain behavior arise more? And is it based upon, you know, we're, are we, are we being fair and making sure that there's not cultural differences that may be bringing us to a behavior more than others? So, all of those things, the deans talk about all the time, and I think when we set a target from that standpoint, then that ensures on our end that we can say that every single student, when that behavior has come across, is treated fairly and consistent. Now, the other piece of it is making sure then that we're reaching out in different ways to parents. And so, the expectation is, along with that target, that there are a minimum of a phone call that's going home, no matter what, what the incident is. And that, that is something that has been an expectation, but it's something that's been stressed even more, because we know that if we can get in front of it, and if we can continue to bring parents into it, then we're only going to, you know, achieve success in this.
Dr. Lee, could, I was thinking, when you're talking about that as a group, and we see the decline, so congratulations to you guys for that. And I just think, you know, you're looking at 180 students, so each one of those students are, it's a name, and you know this kid. Could you kind of talk about some of the individual interventions that are going on? It's, I mean, when a student is getting suspended, obviously there was major violation, and we're not waiting for three violations before we step up interventions. So, what are some of those interventions, and when do they start for these kids?
Yeah, I'll speak, you know, and these interventions, you know, I know are happening across the levels, because the three of us are always talking about this. And oftentimes, you know, especially with the middle schools, we've been able to bring the deans and the assistant principals together to have these types of discussions. But, you know, again, some of the interventions you're going to hear in a minute, so I don't want to steal 360's Youth Services thunder, so hit me if I delve into those, but, and I'll let them speak to those. But some of the deans, you know, really is the proactiveness. You know, you will see, if you walk into our schools, they're in the hallways, our teachers are out there. One, you know, it goes back to what we talked about, we want our schools to be positive places. But a secondary piece of that is really, we can see if a student's having a bad day as we're speaking to them, and if all of a sudden that student's not saying hello, we can step in and say, hey, what's going on? And try to, you know, circumvent that piece of that, and that really, that situation with that student before it escalates. And so those are some of the interventions. You will, you know, our deans, our assistant principals, they know our students, they'll talk with them, they'll build those bonds, and, you know, it's frequent that if they see such-and-such is maybe not having a bad day, maybe having, not only that secondary conversation with the student, but then possibly alerting some of the adults that that student will encounter during the day. Hey, just so you know, such-and-such, talk with me, you know, you may want to make sure during the day, be extra supportive. So, those are some of the things you won't see in the numbers, but I think some of the reasons we're seeing that trend is because of those exact things. And, you know, when I talk to, you know, the principals about this presentation, you know, one of the things that they wanted to make sure we stressed was how many interventions go in on a daily basis that we just don't measure. And it's almost impossible to measure. And, but I think, again, that's some of the reasons we're seeing some of this declining trend because of that work.
Could I ask, just, just a clarification, just to make sure this is on the radar, I'm sure it is, but I just wanted to ask because it's not up there when we look at the different classes of races, if you will. But one thing I've noticed over the past few years, when we dig at these, the discipline reports, the really detailed ones, is, yes, I'm absolutely concerned with 9% of our African-American population equating to 40% of our suspensions, but I also noticed over half the kids, whether it's in school or out of school, are, come from economically disadvantaged homes as well, and they only make up 15% of our population about. So, I'm just making sure that we're cross-referencing things too, to like, to make sure, okay, is, you know, every, I'm glad to hear you say that every individual student is being looked at, what we can do for that individual student, but I think a lot of it has to do with environment too. And I think that's where that economically disadvantaged thing, having, speaking from experience, can also come into, into play here. And so I'm just making sure that's always being looked at and evaluated as well.
Yeah, I think the board's suggestion, I believe, two years ago, that we start to add that piece of data along with gender and students with IEPs has really helped us to, as you say, you know, take a look at some of those other crossovers that definitely occur.
I have a quick question. So, when we look at, you know, you said that there was, this was a number of students, not incidences, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, if you have an African-American male that has an IEP?
Mm-hmm.
Is he, okay, that's-
It could come from economically disadvantaged too.
Yeah, I'm just-
But cover.
So, that student is going to be in each of these bars?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I have a question. When you look at the data, do you look at these students when they started having OSS? Like, were these kids that were in elementary school that had issues, and now the intervention that was done in elementary school didn't really help? Or I'd be interested in understanding more about that.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. I will tell you, we have the capability of seeing that, so when a, when a student sits down with that dean, immediately their discipline history comes up, not just for, if they're a sophomore for the past two years, but also everything that happened in middle and everything that happened in elementary. And I know that the deans look at that data to help, I think, paint a picture of it. Oftentimes, they're, we're careful about that data to, because we know that there are different points in their lives, especially, you know, as they mature, that sometimes just wasn't a, maybe it was a transition into the school that year, and they moved in, and it just wasn't a good year. So, our deans are careful not to make prejudgments regarding that data, but, you know, I think it, it's there, and they use it, that tool properly, just to help sometimes paint that background picture. Sometimes it's relevant, sometimes it's not.
Yeah, I guess I was looking at it more differently, so that you would look at it to look at possible programs that maybe are addressed at the younger level, you know, ages, because you saw whatever was done with that child through his school years, it didn't help. And looking at it in high school is nice, but it's like, I want to learn a lesson from it and see what I need to do differently at the younger ages.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right, and I can let Laura speak to that a little bit more, but we know the research does support that some of those early interventions, especially in elementary and middle school level, really do have a bigger effect than potentially once they get to high school.
And we haven't picked apart the numbers to look at longitudinally how students are doing, but we know that many of our interventions cross through the grade levels. Restorative justice is a good example of that. So, in an elementary school, they call it a peace circle, so there's a group and they're talking every morning or a couple of times a morning, or a couple of times a week, and they are problem-solving, and the kids are really learning to problem-solve. Then, we hear from feeder middle schools and feeder high schools that those particular students might be riled up about something, but they will come to the administration and say, we need to do a, we need to do a circle, like, things are coming. And so then that tells us that that's an intervention that we're using at the elementary level and a skill that kids are carrying then through the high schools. And then the high schools are very invested in that restorative justice piece as well. It looks a little bit different there, but kind of follows their developmental appropriateness.
Susan?
Just a quick question, and you may not have the answer now, but I'd be interested, almost touching on what Lori asked, as far as understanding how our interventions are successful with individual students. So, knowing whether or not we have a junior who, again, received, had- Very interested in understanding and looking at those numbers.
And just very quickly, again, there's the data for the other demographic groups based on gender, FRL, IEP, LEP, and our IEP students. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our guests from 360 Youth Services to- So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our guests from 360 Youth Services to share with you a little bit about some of those interventions that have taken place particularly at the high school, and why we're so excited about this program and the potential for next year with it.
Thank you. So first and foremost, we are thrilled to be sharing our evening with you, and, and just honored that you would share your time with us tonight. So thank you very much. This is just an incredible discussion, and just another indication of how fortunate we are to live in such a strong community, with incredible school administrators and volunteer leadership within the district. So thank you so much for the, the chance to share and to be a partner with you. 360 is a dynamic nonprofit organization, founded now more than 45 years ago, with a shared vision of changing lives and inspiring hope in children, teens, and young adults. We've partnered with District 204 for more than 30 years, and we are so honored to be standing alongside you again here tonight. We're going to spend our time tonight sharing a little bit more about our counseling team's work within the schools, and what we're doing in partnership with the district. In addition to our counseling team's efforts, 360 is honored to be a partner in preventing youth substance use, and also providing supportive housing for young people experiencing homelessness here in the district. To get us started, I'm, I'm pleased to introduce to you our clinical director, Margot Smith. And Margot is going to share more about the changing landscape facing kids in our community, and how District 204 and 360 Youth Services have been working together to create innovative solutions to help better support our students. We're then going to turn it over to Tanisha Davis to share with you a little bit more specific information about the interventions that we have in place in our local high schools. And we're happy to answer any questions that you have along the way. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity to share, and Margot Smith.
Thank you. Some of the stuff we've already touched on, so forgive me if it's a little repetitive, I'll try to skip around a bit. But we've kind of already mentioned that the community has been changing for quite some time. There's some important demographic shifts to note, including more racial and ethnic diversity, families with limited income, unaffordable housing, many things like this that are putting stress on some of our families within our district, and it is trickling down to the youth. The poverty rate in our county has increased 97% since 2000, so it went from 3.6 to 7.1. And children specifically are at 10.5% rate of being in poverty. In Naperville, the percentage of students that are receiving free or reduced lunch, used to be less than 2% in 2000, is now up to more than 15%. Similarly, there's been an increase in homelessness. From 2006 to 2017, the number of students experiencing homelessness that has been identified by the DuPage Regional Office of Education, has risen from 269 students to 1,689. Similarly, we have some data from our Illinois Youth Surveys that have some startling information that we wanted to share. There has been an increase from 2012 to 2016, from seniors reporting an increase in depression, rising from 23% to 29% of seniors in the district. While we know we are reducing substance use locally at two times the national average, we do know that youth who are involved in discipline issues are more likely to be using substances. This is something we continue to keep an eye on. From 2012 to 2016, the percentage of youth who are seriously contemplating suicide, according to the survey, has risen from 9% to 15%, and is now trending ahead of the Illinois State average of 13%. So the need is pretty clear that our kids need significant support, and we have been honored to, to join alongside District 204 in helping in, in any way that we can, so that the burden isn't solely on the school system. In the fall of 2015 is when we began exploring a new type of partnership, where we aimed at meeting students during their lunch periods in the high school level, in order to help them with the social emotional skills needed to be successful and remain in the classroom. We quickly, quickly learned that the deans, social workers, counselors, everyone, administrators, were delivering top-notch services to the students. We met and brainstormed ways to build on the strengths and successes that were already within the district. The district and 360 collaboration has resulted in successful outcomes, and to talk more about that is Tanisha Davis.
So before we speak specifically about outcomes, it's important to know how the program works. So referrals are initiated by dean, social workers, and counselors. Teachers can also initiate referrals by speaking with the student's classhouse. We do screening and assessments before and after services. One of those assessments is the Youth Assessment Screening Instrument, also known as the YAZI. It looks for risk factors and protective factors for all of the youth. Additionally, we assess by a Strength and Difficulties Questionnaire, which is a youth self-report before and after services. And then we also administer satisfaction surveys, which include scale-in questions, fill-in-the-blank questions, and then an opportunity for students to share any additional information that they may have. Every plan is individualized based upon the youth's screening and assessment. So it's important that you hear some of the successes before we go on into data. So I selected one student who kind of encompasses both of the ways we meet the needs of youth within the school. A youth was referred for alternative to suspension services due to truancy. He had several full and partial day unexcused absences. The dean noticed the increasing trend, and the student's difficulty with serving after schools, after school and Saturday school consequences. Upon meeting with the student, he was very honest about his unexcused absences. However, what was not known was that the student was dealing with undiagnosed anxiety. The student completed the required four sessions as the alternative to suspension, and his parents and student agreed to continuing services. They found that that would be beneficial for the youth. The student completed a total of 10 sessions over a three-month period. That student's dean reported no additional unexcused absences during services and upon completion, and an overall positive change in the student's overall disposition within school. The student reporting feeling a substantial decrease in anxious distress and felt confident that when he did have another anxious moment, he had a toolbox of positive coping skills. On the fill-in-the-blank area of the student's survey, the student had this to say. The question was, please state at least one skill that you learned during your counseling experience that you will continue to use. The student stated, creating a safe space in your mind to calm you, knowing that it will pass and get better, and using your strongest sense to recognize that you are safe. Additionally, in additional feedback and comments, the student stated, I am glad that I had this opportunity, because without it, I do not know how I would have survived. So referral reasons are as follows. We had the opportunity of serving 90 students within the high schools. 35 of those students were specifically referred for alternative to suspension services. The other 55 students were more preventative measures, and we categorize that as social emotional supports. So that could look like things such as having an incarcerated parent, having anxiety, results of homelessness, and other things. So we kind of grouped them into those students who were mandated, or not mandated, but given that as an alternative, and then those students where deans, counselors, social workers were looking at preventative measures. The referral reasons are broken down as follows. Peer conflict was one of our highest at 18, and aggression. Then we had social emotional was 20 students. Boundary violations, as you can see, alcohol and drug use, truancy and defiance. It is important to note that for homelessness, this does not mean that we only served two homeless students. This just means that those two students were referred specifically for distress related to homelessness. The student profile is as follows. As you can see, we served 48 male students and 42 female students. And when we look at the racial breakdown, 45 students served were African American, 21 Caucasian, and as you can see, the continued breakdown for Hispanic, Asian, and then those students identifying as two or more races or viracial. Our outcomes, this is the part everyone wants to know about. So, based on our pre and post-assessment, 88% of students required no additional intervention services, and showed positive behavioral changes. Of those 12%, that just means that additional interventions were needed throughout the school. Specific to the social emotional support, there was an 85% positive change. 9% experienced no change. Now, keep in mind, this doesn't take into account if we were able to continue to work with the youth, youth for a longer period of time, or what that behavior might have looked like had they not received services. And then, there's a small percentage who additional services were required.
So, before we kind of close here, I think you've had an opportunity to see the, some of the data. You've actually heard some of the success stories. At this point, we'd like to show with you what we believe can give you a good idea of what this program has done in our high schools.
I would learn, like, a lot more like self-control. I can handle myself a little bit better now, and I'm thinking a lot more, and I'm making better decisions. And yeah, it just like, helped me grow as a person.
There is such an amazing partnership between 360 Youth Services and District 204. We have worked with students in multiple capacities. And then most recently, we are very excited to be working with District 204 for supportive counseling services for students within the schools.
We are a school, we know we're supposed to do the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic. But what we forget is that we have adolescents going through emotional development, and a lot of times, that hasn't been addressed for them. There's many more needs than we as district's social workers and psychs are able to address. And so having 360 here has helped us to meet those needs.
Counselors that come from 360 Youth Services are able to provide more intense counseling for our students. So we have some students who might be coming in with issues with anger management, that have caused them to have issues in school. Some of them may have had other issues from their home life or experiences that are impacting their ability to be successful as an individual and here at school.
Sometimes, consequencing a youth, they're not always learning why their behavior was inappropriate, or what they could have done differently. So providing counseling services helps them learn how to do things different, to build skills.
We had 360 come into our school community, because this is where our students are, and we're able to, to meet their needs here. It helps us eliminate one of those boundaries that often cause our students not to get the resources that they need.
We meet with students at the school during their lunch periods or access periods, and provide counseling services. We talk about all different types of things, like peer relationships, consequential thinking, how to communicate assertively and not aggressively. So we address all different types of skills and just aspects of life, so that students are actually leaving with new information and new ways to approach things, instead of just serving a detention or suspension. There's been some amazing success stories. We've seen students go from categorize themselves as socially awkward, to becoming leaders within their peer groups. We've seen students who were maybe having difficulties with truancy, to perfect attendance. So some of these sound like drastic changes, but it's just sometimes they're needing that support.
360 Youth Services has truly allowed for the staff that we have here to have another resource and support for students. It has allowed our students to grow and to move forward in a positive direction with the skills that they need, and it builds upon what we're, we're doing as a school community to support them academically, socially, and behaviorally.
We just really want, and when I say we, not just 360 Youth Services, but District 204 in conjunction with 360, we all want to see students succeed.
So after that wonderful, amazing video, I think you can understand why it is that we're very much looking forward to hopefully being able to have a pilot program for, for 360 Youth Services at the middle school next year. Hopefully, at three middle schools, to be able to look at how we can bring those services to middle school students earlier, be able to build those relationships, give those problem-solving skills, and then extend that relationship into the high school. We're also looking at continuing to provide a positive environment for all of our students. We know that we have work to do, and we know that the expectation is, is high, not just from the seven of you, but it's also high from building principals, who want nothing but the best for their kids, and they want to continue making sure that it is a great environment, and that they are meeting students and their families where they, where they are at, and how we can move forward together as a group. Which leads to our final future focus, is to continue increasing our partnership with parents. One of the great things about Public Act 99456, or Senate Bill 100, is the idea that those reentry meetings have been outrageously helpful. Because now, not only do we have the conversation on the front side, when we're having a conversation with the family about something that didn't go right today, but now, when we're bringing them back, we're having a conversation about, okay, something didn't go right last Tuesday, and now it's Wednesday and you're back here, or it's Thursday. How are we going to make sure that Thursday's going to be successful? How are we going to make sure that we don't, that we answer some questions when students might ask, where were you? What happened? And how do we approach those things? And we realize that parents are a great resource to help their, help their child problem solve through that. And those reentry meetings have been, have been very helpful in increasing those partnerships. So those are our three primary future focuses for next year. And with that, I believe it's, if there are any remaining questions.
I have a question about, you had 100 students that you served at the high school level now. So, to bring this to the middle school, what's the capacity? Because I know we partnered where I'm at, and we have waiting lists already for the agencies that are doing it with us. So how is that working?
So what 360 is looking to do is to expand capacity, to be able to serve to the level that the district is interested in. So we will continue to expand our capacity to meet the needs of students in our community. We are fully committed to ensuring that all youth have a chance to experience hope in their lives, and we believe that this partnership is one of the most critical ways that we can do that. So, we're committed to continuing to expand capacity to be able to meet the ever-growing needs of, of kids in our community.
And as far as, like, the cost for parents, when their student is recommended to, for counseling, how does that work out with them?
So as a nonprofit, 360 is blessed with an incredible board. Many of our board members are in the room today, and what we do is we ensure that our services are available to all students, regardless of the ability to pay. We do that through a sliding fee scale basis, where if students are coming into the office, the average payment for a counseling session, a one-hour session, from a sliding fee scale client, could be as little as $12 to get that service. That could cost upwards of $160 in other locations. So that's one of the ways that we make sure that our services remain accessible. And then in looking at the relationship we have with the district, so we're really looking to have a special partnership where we can keep costs down, to ensure that all students have access to services regardless of the ability to pay. And so that's what we look at in terms of our partnership with the District 204.
Thank you. For those students that are using, that are recommended to use 360 services, what is the usual average amount of time that we're seeing that they're, they need to use the services?
So the, we've got two different tracks that are available, and Tanisha can definitely help speak to that. When we look at the alternative to suspension option, we started with a four-session requirement. That for students to be successful, we felt we needed to meet with them at least four times. As we look at our kids who might be more on the social emotional needs perspective, we know that those might require a few more sessions, and so typically, those will go up to 10 sessions. On average, it's just over five sessions that a student meets with us. And the range this last school year ranged from four sessions to 28, just depending on student need. So so long as we don't have a capacity issue, we will continue to meet with students to ensure that we can help them be as successful as, as possible. Some of the side outcomes that we're seeing is not only improved behavior in the classrooms, but we're looking at attendance, we're looking at that recidivism effect. Are these kids able to learn skills so that they can, can carry forward with those positive decision-making and positive skills that they've gained by meeting with our counselors? So, we're continuing to, to find ways to really assess and to measure that in a more robust way.
Since this is a, you know, primarily through their behaviors, do you also have children that come to you, students that come to you with autism? Because sometimes that can be viewed as just bad behavior, when in fact, it's something else.
Absolutely. I'll let Tanisha share a little bit about that.
Sure. So at this time, students who currently have an IEP are having social work minutes, and so typically, we do not receive referrals for students who are already meeting with the school's social worker. However, that does not mean that it has not occurred. There is collaborative conversations with deans, social workers, and counselors, and when they feel that the student may benefit from additional support, maybe from someone who is not a school personnel, then those students can still meet with us.
Okay. I, I would like to talk a little bit about this. So I think, I'd like to move away from the discipline and move more towards the behavior. I think the change in the law was, kind of dictates that we do that, but our presentation hasn't changed, our data collection hasn't changed. You know, if you look at the board policy, it talks about moving from, retitling it from discipline to student behavior. We start the presentation off with behavior, then we go into discipline, then we go back to behavior. And it made me think about when Mike talked about targets. You know, the target isn't to have less discipline, because we could just say, 10 disciplines a year, that's all you get. Right. That's not the goal here, for anybody. The goal is to have the decrease... The goal is to have the decrease in behaviors. So I think we need to make sure that we track that, we present that. Because that is, that's the overall goal here. I mean, to, that's got to be the target, is reduce the negative behavior, promote the positive behavior. So I'd like to see, you know, the law changed, our policy changed. We need to catch up with that just from the data collection standpoint. And, you know, it's tough when you start over and say, this is, you know, the number of truance, and you start breaking down that stuff. But it, I think that's where we're headed and that's where, that'll give us a better idea of moving forward. That's it.
I applaud that, actually. It's, I think today with the inclusion of 360, it's a fundamental paradigm shift. And the shift is, behavior is just not rewards and punishment or consequence. Behavior is very complex. And oftentimes, we haven't dealt with the complexity of the behavior, we just deal with the incident. So I think today's meeting is a fundamental shift, and I really do like your emphasis. I think that's what the district and we should be looking at, is changing behavior and maintaining good behavior. So I like that.
Sorry, last, last just comment on that and sorry for so many comments, but along with that, just ensuring that, you talked about students may not sometimes have understood the incorrect behavior that they demonstrated. Just ensuring that we also set those positive expectations. What are the expectations at the beginning of the school? And you may already do that, but just ensuring that the students understand what the expectations of them are, I think would be really, really important. Because some, we as adults know how, we think we know how we should behave, but some students, all students may not come in understanding that. And it may be a good reminder at the beginning of the year.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
I just want to make a comment because I just want to be sure that I publicly thank 360 for this partnership. I think it's been really amazing and we're really, you know, we've split the cost with 360 on this. We've been trying to fundraise, ask our foundation, especially for an expansion into the middle school, which we're hopeful that they're going to fund. And I know that you all are doing your best with your board back there, trying to fundraise to make sure that you can provide these school-based services. Because I think with what's happening in our community, that we're, you know, we're meeting and talking about, in some of the data that you shared, you know, we have more students who come to school with all these other issues that get in the way, sometimes of academics, or get in the way of them making good decisions about their behavior. And this is, this has really been a great program that we've been able to add to help combat that. So I just want to make sure that, I say publicly how much we appreciate that partnership and hopefully we can continue that for many years to come.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I have one other comment. Kind of along with what Justin was talking about, when, there are so many interventions, but I know there are some that you do already track data on. And I think that might be important for us to see too, is, you know, what ones are you seeing are successful and how do we, you know, how do we determine when it's not successful? And what are the next steps? I think that's the kind of information I think folks would like to know, because I know you guys are very, very busy working on this. It's not like you're ignoring behaviors and it's not like you're ignoring students. And there's so many steps involved that I think saying hello to them in the morning and getting to know them is one of them, but we don't really track that all that much, my guess is, unless you have an assigned mentor and those kind of things. So the ones that we're tracking, that might be kind of informative too for us too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we move to the ever-popular budget update, forecast update.
Do we have to listen to this?
We do have to listen to this.
Good evening, board members. I waited till the last possible minute to put this forecast together, hoping that something would happen in Springfield and nothing happened in Springfield. So you're getting a lot of what you've already heard before. And I think I'm just going to take an opportunity to review the assumptions that we put into this forecast. The next presentation in July will be a draft budget that I'll present to you all. Mr. Shipley and I are locking ourselves away and working on the budget every chance we can. It's a complex task. It's like building a schedule when you're in a school. It's kind of, it's one of the funner things I like to do because I don't usually get bothered. But we are working on that and we will have a draft budget for you. So there was no budget in Springfield. We'll talk about some of the legislation that was discussed and is it some place or stage down in Springfield? We'll review the assumptions in the forecast and we'll go from there. The alliance, the administrators, the school boards, school business officials, again revised their K-12 budget crisis toolkit. And we've got it in the district and are looking at that, pending what happens in the summer with Springfield and how we can move forward. So I want you to all be aware that certainly, school districts are wondering if there's going to be a K-12 budget, if the evidence-based funding model will be approved, if it'll run like it did last year where they passed something for schools but not the rest of the state that aren't able to fund it. But we're all discussing that as business officials. Some of the bills that were discussed, Senate Bill 6, it's a fiscal year 2018 state budget, passed the Senate, it's sitting in the House, so there is no state budget. Senate Bill 9 was a revenue bill which increased taxes, income taxes from 3.75 to 4.95 for individuals and the corporate from 4.8 to 7. The evidence-based funding model, it passed both houses. It hasn't been presented to the governor yet, but he said that he would not sign that bill because it had some complications with Chicago. That bill does not benefit us very much at all, particularly when you take into consideration other components of the grand bargain. Senate Bill, or House Bill 1126 is a property tax referendum. That's if districts have 125% of their available resources to fund those 27 elements of the evidence-based funding model. You could pass a referendum to have a tax freeze. We are not even close to that. We're much lower than that, both compared to our cohorts and the county. Pensions, Senate Bill 16 is the choice option and it also eliminates the 6% end of career. There's Senate Bill 81, minimum wage. Senate Bill 484, which is property tax freeze, and that's a two-year tax freeze. There's some discussion that the governor would like a five-year or permanent tax freeze. And as I've discussed in here, that's something that would be really difficult for us financially. House Bill 2025 is workers' compensation and 1259 is drivers' education and physical education relief. Same slide that I think I've shown the last three forecasts, we're down $15.3 million in categorical payments. We hope to receive another categorical payment sometime in June and if we do, I'll let you know immediately. But it's very likely that we're going to end the year at least with one payment less. And we ended last year with one payment less. Because of that, for the fiscal year 18 budget, I'm forecasting that we're only going to receive three of our four categoricals. Particularly if they pass a K-12 budget under the current funding formula, you know, they're not finding the revenue to pay for the budget, so they're probably not going to pay us everything that they pass. So to review all of the assumptions so that you know where we're going at, given that there's no state budget or K-12 budget, I wanted to go through all of the assumptions and how they impact the school district. On the top left is our total EAV, that's our equalized assessed valuation. And you can see that our property values are climbing pretty steadily. They end in 2021 at $6,370,000, quite a bit. And the total EAV percent and change, which includes new property and existing property, you can see that that was up by 6.08% in fiscal year 16 last year during the levy. And we're looking at 4.89 going out with my forecast. Existing EAV, that's property that is, those are homes that are already in the property and the values of those homes rose by 4.71% last year. And I'm forecasting 4% going forward. So it's slightly more conservative, but property values are going up in the community. New growth, that is something that I've stated before has really helped us. I had a forecast of $39 million in new property a year ago and we came in at $65 million. So I've upgraded that to $45 million in new property for each of the years going out to 2021. And I think as we move further into those years and we get a sense of how the developments are taking off, you know, those will get adjusted and probably downgraded. Because I think at some point in 1920 and 21, we're going to see a slowdown in new property just because we're running out of space. The other assumptions are the Consumer Price Index. You can see that we've had some difficult years with the Consumer Price Index with 1.7, 1.5, 0.8, and 0.7. This next levy year in December will be at 2.1% if there's not a freeze to the property taxes. So that's a better-than-average Consumer Price Index going out. I'm forecasting a 4% increase. Our tax rate is dropping, and our tax rate is dropping because our property values are going up. But unfortunately, because our property values are going up and our population is going down, on the bottom left, you can see that our equalized assessed valuation per pupil shows quite an increase. And that's, that's the formula that kind of plays against us with the state because the state thinks that we've got all this money that we can tap into and we can't because we're a tax cap district. So you'll see in the next slide how that impacts us on the general state aid side in addition to taxes or mandated categoricals not coming in. So the foundation level of $6,119 hasn't changed in quite some time and I'm not anticipating that it's going to change moving forward. Certainly not while the state doesn't have a budget and while they're trying to pass an evidence-based funding model, they're not paying attention to that. There was a point in time when they did increase that dollar amount every year. But you can see our general state aid revenue per, on the top right and how it decreases, that's because the property values are going up, our student enrollment is going down, and the state is saying, you don't need as much money from us in the form of general state aid. So in 2021 and 2022, you can see we dropped down to $12,685,000 and $12,418,000. And that's a real impact to the school district. It's quite a loss in revenue in addition to not receiving our mandated categoricals. On the bottom left, you can see that I'm forecasting 100% proration each of those years, which means that they're going to give us everything that they should. And again, they don't give us that dollar amount pursuant, they give us the difference between what we raise locally and that dollar amount. So it's, you know, $925 now and in 2021, it's just over $400. So it's quite a difference. And then I've forecasted that our low-income percentage is going to remain flat at about 14%. So with all of that in our forecast, and this is what we're building the budget on, we're looking at a fiscal year 18. Presently, we're looking at $324,325,356 total revenue. And we're looking at $327,803,031 in expenditures. The board, the last meeting, decided to keep funding TODs and not going into, cutting into the operations and maintenance budget so that we can keep our facilities up in shape, get the air conditioning in this building repaired and some roofs taken care of.
We didn't say the air conditioning here.
No. Okay. So we're going to look at a deficit of around $3.7 million. And as we build the budget, we'll see how that plays out. Long-term though, in fiscal year 19 and 20, and if I had shown the previous two years, I put in all four categorical payments. So that's why it looks a little more positive in 19. And then in 20, it shows a negative, but that's simply because of the general state aid component and not the loss in categoricals. So the loss in categoricals, if they continue and go forward, it'll show, it'll show a greater deficit moving out.
Jake?
Yes, sir.
When they were prorating our general state aid, the lowest they went was 89%. Now that they're not giving us our...
Categoricals?
Yeah. What would that add up to? Like, what's the proration? I heard Dr. Sullivan say 44%.
Yeah. If you were, if you, if you took that dollar amount and put it on the general state aid side and said that, you know, you got all your categoricals, you're losing that in revenue on the general state aid side, it'd be a 44% reduction. And when they prorated in the past, it was 89, 87, 92%.
So a better way of saying it, compared to what we got last year, essentially, we've gotten 40% of what we got, 44% of what we got last year.
I mean, it's the worst, the loss of categorical payments is worse for us than the proration was.
Yeah. The proration was, you know, $2, $3, $3.5 million each year. The categoricals is much greater.
I think they're not giving anybody those categoricals though, right?
No, when they come, it's, it's kind of turned into a collaboration study for the business managers. Because as soon as somebody gets one, we all email and call each other up, "I found one." And then everybody starts looking then. And then we compare, did you get the same ones that we got?
Oh, okay.
So we check pretty regularly so that, you know, I can make the call and say, "I got you, we got one."
Okay.
So what I understand, I went to a one meeting, the state's $1.5 billion short in terms of their categorical payments to the school districts in the state of Illinois.
They have, a number of years ago, I believe it was in fiscal year 2010, did not pay us a categorical payment. And we were delayed and did not receive that until I think four or five years later. And it was late in the year, it was in April when they paid us that fifth categorical. They called it the April surprise back then. Non-operating, that is our bonds, our debt certificates. It's the air conditioning that we moved in there for TOD to complete. And it's also where we're putting the funds from the sale of our property, which hopefully continues to go through. And I'm hearing nothing but good news on that. So when I build the budget, you'll see a fiscal year 2018 non-operating budget as well. And this is the slide that is probably the scariest to me, and this is if there is a two-year property tax freeze. Even that temporary tax freeze sets us back substantially. And as you all know, board members, we've done a marvelous job of living within our means. We've got low operating expenditures per pupil. We've run balanced budgets with the exception of when you didn't want to because you saw a need or because the state failed to pay us a payment. So we're not in a position where we can absorb too many more of these hits. Long-term, you know, the district's finances, I was really holding my breath and hoping that the evidence-based funding model would pan out for us. Because all of the things that we've done, all of the things when you associate them with those 27 elements, say that, you know, we're doing as well as anybody possibly could with the funds that they're receiving. It's just that they're not putting enough money in the model to get us where we need to be.
How much should we come up short with the model at this point?
We don't come up short.
No, they, they, the Senate Bill 1 gives us another additional $800,000. But the problem is, is that you throw the tax freeze on top of it, you're looking at a $2.7 million loss in revenue and the taxes.
So when I look at 19 and 20, it appears that's based on optimism and you're always very careful, but somehow, someway, you're optimistic. And you're always very careful, but somehow, some way, you're optimistic. But even in '20, we run in deficit. And we continue to run in deficit over time, given the current status. So that means cuts, correct?
You're correct. Given the current funding model with the general state aid formula working against us, we are losing money from the state. And now we're losing it in mandated categoricals. So we are showing a deficit spending or deficit scenario moving forward, which is cuts or other things.
So I see in a future activity continued Board of Education updates. Couple times during the course of these updates, over the course of years, I keep on trying to find the tipping point and wonder if we're at that tipping point, which we, you don't provide only these updates to us, that we, you, we expand these presentations to our community in terms of a community engagement kind of activity. Because if this continues, the community will have to decide and assist the board in terms of engagement activity, what our next steps are. So I'm wondering, is it the tipping point where we begin to consider including more people in the decision-making in order that this board and this district does what's right for its kids?
I would say, Mr. Razak, that engaging the community and sharing this information would be something that I'd be willing to do. I know that we went around to schools during Senate Bill 1 and Senate Bill 16 and talked with them. I also know that there's a lot of great community leaders out there who'd be willing to come in and look at our finances, both our revenues and our expenditures. And, you know, maybe they put a critical eye to it and they see something I don't. I'd be happy to put a committee together to do that.
Yeah. I'll, just to dovetail into what Mike said, you know, this board and this district, essentially since 2008, 2009, this board has worked and the administration has worked very hard to keep up with state funding. And for almost 10 years now, the district has maintained a balanced budget. But as, I think as Mr. Razak said, given the current climate of our state and what we could be looking towards of what potentially could happen either with education funding or tax freeze, regardless of all those things, like Mr. Razak said, starting in, you know, 2020, we're going to be maintaining deficits. And I think, you know, I've never been kind of a half-cup-full guy or half-cup-empty guy. I'm kind of more of a realist guy. And I think it's time we either need to start communicating to our public or actually start to have real conversations of where else we could cut. I mean, we've cut so much. I don't know what more we can cut, but we might have to start having those discussions publicly, too. So I just wanted to say that.
I think at this point, if we're, once we start any more cuts, it's, you know, talking about dismantling some programs at this point, I'm afraid. So I would say, too, before we do that, I think we do need to go ask the community what they would support. But, so yeah.
Others?
I'm not as smart as Mr. Razak, so I let policy guide me a little bit. And I, this discussion focused me on some new policy that I hadn't found before.
What?
Wow.
Or colon 10.
The record shows.
"To the extent possible, the tentative budget shall be balanced as defined by the State Board of Education guidelines. To the extent possible." For colon 02. "The board will strive to operate on a fiscally sound basis within a balanced budget whenever possible. And it will secure community understanding and support the fiscal requirements of a good school program." So we're forecasting deficit spending to maintain the current level of educational services that we're providing. It's not sustainable. I've lost faith in the ability of the state of Illinois to provide a reasonable solution. Our options are to raise revenue or cut expenditures. We need to decide those issues. We need to decide those with input from the community. But ultimately, the community is going to be deciding what level of educational services do we want to support. That's it.
Lori and Susan, welcome to the board. Do you have any comments?
You know, just over the last, the last month, month and a half, it's become very clear that we need to hear from, that we need to put some things in front of the community as we go forward just to understand, Justin's pretty, you know, concise as well as you are, to understand what level of support services, educational services, the community wants to be able to see as we move forward in the next couple of years. We need to hear from them.
I agree. I think we've, I mean, we've all been greatly disappointed in the behavior downstate. And it sounds like it's not going to be improved anytime soon. So unfortunately, it seems like we're facing something that we really have to deal with and look at getting more community input on what kind of choices they want us to make here.
Kathy, I don't know of you.
I haven't. I agree. I mean, I think the benefit of getting more of the community involved is for them to also understand some of the discussion that is downstate that you hear. Property tax freeze sounds like a good thing to most people, but it's really not a good thing for most people, especially when you're taking away the education program that we'd be looking at. So I think having that discussion sooner rather than later is a really good idea because maybe more advocacy for downstate would help, too, at this point. So it'd be, I think it's a real good time to start educating the public about what's going on. All your numbers are fun to look at every week. But I think we have to share the fun.
I'm disappointed our next meeting isn't till July.
Yeah, I was hopeful. I pulled up last month's presentation and put the two slides. And I'm like, "Oh, shoot. Nothing changed."
That was something that...
I wake up in the middle of the night and do that.
Every single night.
When Mike and myself and Jay were at the Alliance Summit when all the school boards were down in Springfield, that was something that was abundantly clear from all the school boards in attendance is that how, that we were, the school boards told us to the legislators that were there that how big of an impact a property tax freeze would have. And that it's being dishonest because the taxes won't freeze. And when you hurt schools, when local taxes and levying against those taxes are really the only reliable source of revenue that schools have, that ends up hurting schools, which ends up hurting property taxes, which ends up hurting, so, I mean, it's a snowball effect. And there was a couple of members that, school board members, that got up and really expressed that eloquently. But, you know, we need to start saying that, too. I mean, because it has a big impact.
I think it's, you know, there are so many pieces of the puzzle that are on the table. And sometimes it's a discussion of one piece without the discussion of the other pieces. And I think you're right, Mark. I think it's dishonest. It's purposely confusing to the public to gain votes, I guess. I don't know what votes they're getting for not passing a budget, but it's dishonest. I think we need to have a real, honest discussion with all the pieces on the table. And for gosh's sake, pick a solution that is best for the majority of people.
I want to say, too, I've seen Warren Dixon has been putting some presentations or collaborating. And he's done a very good job with advocating, you know, what a property tax freeze would mean. I think he's just done a very good job with that. I think he needs to be, you know, kudos.
He's great to work with.
So maybe, you know, when we do go out to the community and have these discussions, he might be a good person to have with us.
And not only is he saying how bad a tax freeze is, but he said, "The only way you're going to fix this state is by putting more money into education" to relieve the burden on the property taxpayer. So, and this is a guy that's pretty conservative and has been on a lot of commissions that understands these things as an assessor and...
In fact, if they had put the money in in the first place, maybe the property taxes wouldn't be.
Yes.
And disbarred.
It's another form of kicking the can, yeah.
And he needs to be looked at as a nonpartisan issue.
You said a non.
A what?
Go ahead.
No, I mean...
I knew what you meant.
I mean, we all have the capability of looking at that as, at this as a nonpartisan issue. And I think he's done a good job of expressing that as well, that this isn't, you know, Republicans versus Democrats. This is just doing the right thing for public education. I just want to thank him for being such an advocate for public education and putting himself out there as well.
Dr. Sullivan, Mr. Strang, I think you have direction.
We'll put our thoughts together and how we can do that and get back to the board.
Good to see you, Jay.
Briefly, I'll move to the next steps. Discussion item E. It is called next steps. When a new board is formed, good boards participate in a starting right board self-evaluation. That starting right self-evaluation needs to be done with the help of an Illinois Association of School Board member in order that we can do our work. We did our work on June 1, 2017. And we pretty much came up with the following steps to be worked on. And so I thought I would identify those. One, I guess we're doing this to continue to be deliberate about offering a variety of community engagement activities depending on the purpose and desired outcome. Two, we talked about considering a one-page version of our board agreements or norms. Three, we talked about the practice of being open and honest with each other and feeling comfortable in calling or meeting with another board member if we have concerns. And finally, four, we decided that we were going to review our board agreements and edit the agreements if necessary and come to consensus. So that's what happened at our June 1 meeting. Continue to work forward with this. Finally, there's not much I can add to the fun that Mr. Strang gave us. But the Lenn meeting that I went to on June 6 pretty much was a rehash. Some things that I didn't quite understand is, don't be surprised if general state aid will be used as a negotiating point for the state budget and passing the budget. There's some members in the legislature that are saying not only maybe we'll withhold categoricals, but withhold general state aid.
Just everything?
Oh, just everything.
Just hold the education hostage.
So that was mentioned in the board meeting. And as much, the other thing that's, you know, why it's important to look at the whole of this is even something as simple as raising the minimum wage to $15. That would be great for our classified staff. But if we're only getting so much money that, again, in addition to withholding categoricals, a possible tax freeze, pension, that just provides less money in the total picture. So hopefully, these things will work out so that we can serve our kids and serve our staff in a good manner. I think that's it. Oh, no, there's one thing. At the next meeting? Sorry. Well, he gets to go. We'll give it to him. At the next meeting, I was contacted by District 03. They're considering a resolution also. It's going to be impossible to co-sponsor with them, given the timing, but maybe we can support them. So we'll bring that forward at the next meeting. Could I have...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.